The computer. Alright, so welcome everyone. Um, my name is Joel Mieses and today we're gonna be discussing the PD. P P P D D exam. Um, you know, we send out, if you've registered before, I send out a practice exam or practice questions that we are going to um. Um, briefly going on that we're going to be using for discussion and um, I I'm also going to be giving a brief um. Yeah, this my uh, I lost my presentation. I have a presentation on the exam. If you ever taken an exam before. Uh, this will be helpful if you have just bear with me for a second as I go get through uh, the the, you know, the portion of the exam. Um, you know, for those who never taken it, uh, it's gonna be a brief, so we're gonna spend most of our time on the questions. I I just lost my um. I had it queued. I don't know. I don't know what I did with it. Send me open it again. My presentation. Uh, let's see what I do with it. There you go. So I'm going to be sharing my screen here. And put that over here. Okay, so um, let me go ahead and uh, share my screen so we can get started. Again, I apologize for the um. The difficulties here. Uh, I think I got that. There you go. Share. Alright, so can everybody see that? Uh, I hope you can. So um, let me go back to the beginning. So again, again, welcome to our our prior development and document documentation exam. Uh, strategies. And again, my name is Joel Mieses. I'm an architect here in Richmond, Virginia. Uh, I am currently on the Vietnam War. I'm also an editing instructor at a um, five point community college. Uh, again, this was brought to you by completely pretty by the Vietnam of by the Virginia chapter of of Noma. Uh, you know, it's been around since twenty twenty. Um, you know, so we are a relatively young chapter. So this is what we are going to cover today. You know, we're going to give a brief introduction and then talk about briefly about the five point. I think most of you have taken this exam before. So we're gonna spend most of our time on the exam content, which is the con- the the uh, the practice questions I sent you guys to look at. Uh, and then and then I'll give you um, some um, some 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 briefly, some brief. We're gonna have some questions. I'll give you some some references. So um, on resources that you can possibly use if you're not using them. Uh, so you can, you know, possibly do better on the test. So uh, again, this exam was brought in. Everything I'm giving you. For this exam, it's coming directly from the source. It's Ankar. It's not coming. It's not coming from me. You know, I didn't. I didn't make any of this stuff up. I wish I had. I was that creative, but I I'm not. Everything from you, if I'm not giving you, it's coming straight from the source, which you can find at Ankar dot com. And everything I used it for the exam. That we're coming today is coming from the guidelines and the uh, and their handbook, which you know, you should be, if you're not familiar with, I'm kind of doing it for you here. You know, so that's where everything's coming from. So I'm not, you know, coming up. It's not not just coming out of my mind or me speculating on anything. So as you know, if you're not really know, like I said, we're just gonna briefly go over the exam. Bear with me if you have done it before. Uh, I say exam appointments are available all year. You can do in person. You can do virtual. You know, personally, never done virtual because by the time virtual got introduced, I was done with my exam. You know, six exams, you know, totaling fourteen ten. Uh, uh, before there used to be a rolling clock, you know, for five years, but they got rid of that. So you know, you don't have to worry about that anymore. You know, where uh, so you don't have to worry about, uh, but you do have to take the exams, you know, as soon as sixty days. If you fail it. Hopefully, you know, that's not the case for you. But if you fail, you gotta wait sixty days and you're gonna take it three times within the same calendar period, right? So that's kind of the rule. Uh, so that's kind of the exam itself. And then, of course, we know they got different types of items. They don't call them questions. They call them items, right? You got multiple choice. Uh, which is no, we don't know what multiple choices are. Check all that apply where you give you more than one, more than more than one answer. You know, they asked you, you know, what, you know, which three of these and they give you six toys and you gotta pick three or four. So tho- those are typically, you know, the most difficult ones. Uh, and just note that every single item, when I say item in questions in the exam is worth one point. They don't. They don't do. They don't do um, they don't. The questions are now weighted. You don't get extra credit, extra points for a difficult question or easy questions. All the questions are worth one point, meaning that if you don't, if you don't, if in any sort of time exam, right? So that means if you do not know a question, it's probably your best interest. You simply skip it. You can save it. And uh, and and you can put a check on it to come back to it later. At the end of the exam, you can come back and go back to all the questions that you. That you put that check through and you can save. That means if you are spending more than one minute or two minutes on a question, it's not worth it. Right? Remember, because it, you know, each each level of the exam has different, you know, different time and you had to move expeditiously. So. Uh, check that and come back to it later because that question is not more worth than the next question. Uh, even if you think you can get the answer, it was gonna take you five minutes to figure it out. You know, when you finish with the exam, come back to it. Uh, obviously, you got the quantitative fill in the blank, since fill in the blank question. It's always gonna be numeric. You know, it's never gonna be, you know, gonna ask the type to answer for for some things. Those gonna be numeric, not not word. Hotspots where you, you know, they give you an item, you pick the location and then drag in place where they might give you a bank of questions and you select the right answers. Uh, you drag in the right answers in the right location, like a leader line or something like that. So those are the five types of items. I'm pretty sure you're all familiar. If you're not. Again, um, it's better that you go through the the Ankar now offers a practice test that you can um. Go in and download and you can uh, not download. You can actually go on there and practice that way you're familiar with the interface of the exam, right? That way you're not wasting, like I say, it's a time exam. You're not wanna wait, waste time trying to figure out how the test works. Where stuff is, where the calculator is, where, how do I go back? How do I go forward? How do I go check the answers? You don't want to be wasting time doing that. So it's better you're familiar with the interface of the exam. Everything, you know, what you see on the screen where everything is that way, you can solely focus on the questions instead of time. I mean, that happened to me. When five point O came out, uh, back in twenty sixteen, there was no practice test on Ankar yet. Cause the camera just come out. So the first time I went there, five point O, it was it was a little. It was different than the four point O exam, the interface. And I I wasted so much time trying to figure out what stuff was, even though I read this stuff and even though I I read the guidelines, but it was a new interface and I was just like. You know, where's where where is this stuff at? You know, um, and then especially that's when they introduced those um. Uh, the 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 case study questions, you know, that weren't wanting fire with four point O. So I lost a ton of time trying to. Figure that out because there were documents in there. They were taking a long time to load. It was bad. So. I I didn't pass that exam the first time I took it because, you know, I lost quite a bit of time and I pretty much ran out of time. I had a rush through the last few questions because of that. So. Make sure you're familiar with the exam uh, interface and how the exam works. That way you can just solely focus on the answers. So you're not thinking about the exam itself, right? Any other questions on that? I'm pretty sure if you took the exam, you probably submitted with it, but like I said, each exam is different, especially this one is one of the, it's, you know, this one and P D D are the biggest exams as far as in terms of. Um, of of items. So and in case of uh, case studies, so everything is bigger on these two exams. Um, so let's talk about the exam content. It's no, there's no questions on 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 that. Um. What is the private development documentation? Basically, to sum it up, I can read the definition there, but basically you are. This exam five point O as compared to the previous exams is uh, is is kind of like lines up with kind of how the project. Uh, how you would do a project in an office, right? So the previous exam, well, I say previous, but what they consider the previous one is 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 a P P D. That's kind of the schematic and design development phase of the project. Now, this exam is, you know, it's kind of moving into the construction documents phase of the exam, right? Where everything, everything has been selected already, like you explore that stuff in the previous exam, you know, you're exploring. You know what type of structure you're gonna have. You can't do that in P A too. Uh, you know, you kind of, you kind of making decisions. Right? Or what kind of structure you're gonna have, what kind of systems you're gonna have, you know, the site's been selected. Uh, you know, the budget's kind of been selected. You know, or you know, kind of estimate it. And now here, you kind of like um, putting all those. Decisions that you made in the previous phase, which is, you know, design development and schematic and design development. And actually. The decisions have been made. Now it's time to detail those decisions and make sure that you can adapt them to the program, right? That's kind of, that's kind of, that's kind of what this exam is, you know, so the the concert, I mean, we all done concession documents. So. You know, you you're getting this this plan is ready to be permitted, you know, ready for a uh, a um, someone to. Uh, build something out of them, right? That's what you provide. That's what we do. We provide services so contractors can can uh, can build those things. So. You say, you know, you pretty much documenting everything and now everything now down. Uh, so so you're going from a different scale, you know, to a smaller scale. So they, how many items you have on one hundred? Ninety-one of those are scores. So now nine of them are gonna be, you know, kind of testing questions that Ankar throws in there to see how they do. Um, but one hundred of those questions are, uh, you should try to answer all of them because you're not, you're not gonna know which nine are not. Are not the ones that are um, they're gonna be tested, right? Four hours and five minutes, forty-five minute break. Five hour total if you go there in person. Well, if you do it in online too, uh, I mean, you know, so. That's kind of the breakdown of that. And then here's the sections of them. You know, the largest section is. Section two, construction, construction documentation, which is, you know, details, drawings, you know, that stuff. The second section is integration of building materials. What does that mean? You know, integration of building materials and systems. Basically, what I just said earlier, you take those systems that you picked in the previous exam. Or in the previous phase, I mean, you say, and now you're kind of integrating, you know, you you're gonna go with a wood frame, you know, structure. Now it's time, it's time to, you know, uh, now that you made the decision, now it's time to implement it. According to what the your program is in your in your building or your project, you know, how how's, you know, what kind of sizes are you gonna use? You know, the wood size, I'm just bringing wood because it's simple. It's simplest thing. I try to keep stuff simple. So like if you're doing a, if you're a residential architect and you're doing a wood frame house. Wood life frame house, you know, it could get more complicated, but I'm gonna get simple, you know. You know, what type of, you know, foundation structure, the sizes of your of your of your members are gonna be. So you have to detail all that stuff. Everything that we didn't go such in documents. So you you know, now if you were picking a different system, a different type of structure, then you would have to implement in that. But now, since you, since you fit a wood life frame, you know, um, what sizes based on, you know, how many stories you have and based on the window, ladder loads, all that stuff. Has to be integrated, you know, so those two sessions are the two biggest ones. You know, the other ones, private manual, of course specs. You know, that's that's in there. Code, you know, the, you know, by now you should already have, you should have all that stuff figured out, you know, in the previous two exams, P A and P D D. And P P D, I'm sorry, that's where, you know, a lot more code questions because, you know, you're still doing research. By now you should have that stuff figured out and you're moving, like I say, you're implementing all that stuff in into concession documents. But so you're not gonna see the main code questions. And you're gonna see a little bit of cost estimates, you know, but all that stuff we stop, you know, talk more on on C A, but um. Well, that's up. She already been figure out construction cost estimates because, you know, all the systems and stuff has been selected. All right, any questions on the actually on the on the exam, how it's formatted before we get into the uh, into the questions, practice questions that I sent you guys?
No questions.
Okay. Alright, so alright, let's go ahead and talk about the discussion items that I sent. And the way this is gonna work, um, you know, we're gonna, we got about. Uh, roughly forty minutes uh, to go to these. It's uh, I have ten here, ten eleven. And these are coming from this, this, I did not make these questions up. These questions came from retire A R E exams and they are available on Ankar. So some of you might probably might have seen these questions before. Like I said, I want you to get familiar with the, if you're not familiar, you know, with the language of of the exam. So I I was not about to go start, you know, writing my own questions because hey, and I go, even though I'm a professor, I don't, I'm a, I thought at the college level and I I always thought that was my weakest thing, writing questions. My exams were always too easy for my students. So I figure I just take, you know, take it directly from the source. And uh, and um, and in the way, the way it's gonna be, I'm gonna read the questions and then I'm gonna go over. We're gonna have discussion based on the answer. I'm gonna give you the answer. Uh, you can check against your own, your own answer if you took the test, if you took the practice test, that way you know if you got it right. Uh, and then if you have a question, you can, you know, you you can go ahead and raise your hand or you can go ahead and 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 uh, and say it out loud. If you don't agree with the answer, we're gonna talk about that. Like I said, this are not my answers. There are answers that comes from from Ankar, right? So if you don't agree with them. Uh, we got that conversation and see why, which is great, you know, for a topical discussion. Alright, so let's get going to it. Again, if you have any questions, go ahead and start talking. Um, and because I mean, I'm not in front of you, so. Uh, I know there's like a little raised hand thing on on here on on um, on Zoom. You can do that if you want. Um, and I can, I'll call you out. Alright, so number one, the number keynotes in the detail above are reference to. Uh, A, detail numbers, B, finished schedules, C, specifications and deconstruction sequencing. So, you know, you can see it's a detail here of, you know, exterior wall looks like, you know, and you got the corrugated uh, metal deck there. Uh, and then if you see this leader note pointing out to different areas, these some different points in the in the thing. So what are those referencing detail numbers? Uh, no, I mean, it could be, you know, sometimes you have like a key, a key, a key plan on on certain things, but. Just by looking at the numbers, you can tell that the answer is C, you know, specifications. And you can tell because, you know, as you know, specifications are order, you know, with the the first number is reference to a certain uh, certain type of spec, right? So you can see four is, you know, is uh, is uh, is concrete, um, is masonry, I'm sorry, masonry. And you see that's pointing to that is pointing to the the brick there. Five is is metals, right? So you can see that's pointing to the steel angle. Uh, seven is it is it's moisture protection. Uh, it that's pointing to the the vapor barrier. So you can kind of tell that, you know, based on those numbers, those are spec numbers, you know, are uh, you know, uh, nine, you know, pointing to the to the. To the Jip wall there that's finishes. Right? That's what that's what Jip, gypsum wall or gravel is. So that's the, that's the way to know that. I mean, like I said, this could um. I I thought for a second it was detail numbers. The first time I saw it a long time ago, but then a per from review and looking at it, you can see the numbers are based on um. On the on the spec sections. And I I'm pretty sure we're all familiar with those. So that's kind of, that's kind of now, you know, typically, we, you know, you don't see stuff being detailed like this, you know, on on specs. But sometimes there is. So in this case, that's what they're doing on over here. Uh, any questions on that one? Alright, have a hand. Okay, so we're gonna go to number two. Alright, so number two is kind of, you know, it's good to be a C A question, but you know, it's still part of the construction documents phase. You know, shop drawings for dormitory windows have been prepared by the manufacturer, checked by the local distributor and reviewed and approved by the contractor and architect. During installation is discovered that that the quantity of windows is indicated on the shop drawings is one less than. Then shown in the contract documents. Who is responsible for discrepancy? And you're gonna see a lot of these questions on the exam where they uh, items, I mean, where they, it's very wordy. And you can kind of get lost into into figure out what is that they want, right? So you always have to figure out what is it that they're trying to trying to get. You know, so the 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 choices are the architect, the manufacturer, distributor and the contractor. So the answer here is the contractor, right? That is that the best who's responsible for discrepancy. And I'm gonna tell you why, uh, you know, like I said, this could be a C A question as well. But like I said, everything, you know, the 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 contract documents were prepared by the architect. And then once they're, those are hanging out to the contractor, the contractor is is responsible to ensure. You know, the contractor is possible means and methods of construction. So they're responsible for ensuring that everything is built according to the contract documents, right? So ultimately, they're responsible. So like, even though it it might have been sent to the architect. For architect to review, that's basically, you know, the contracts, you know, uh, I don't know which A document that is kind of remember right now. But, you know, ultimately, you know, is is, you know, the contract is supposed to check it first and still acted, acted, you know. Even if the architect misses it, don't review, sends it back, you know, um, ultimately. You know, when it comes back to the contractor and the contractor is purchasing those windows and they go on there, they need to ensure the right quantity. Is purchased based on the contract document. So if if one shows, one less shows up, then the ultimate responsible for that. Because they're responsible means cement is a construction, especially buying and and the right amount. Uh, now, if there's a discrepancy in the drawings, you know, like, you know, there's eight windows in the in the in the. If there's eight windows on the plans and there's only seven on the schedule, then that's ultimately, you know, the architect, the contractor needs to. I have that conversation as an R five with the architect to make sure that, you know, that discrepancy gets solved before the stuff gets gets purchased. So like I said, but you're still asking the contractor. Any questions on that one? I said, very wordy question, but you know, just 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 try to get get to the bottom. Alright, this one to see with the picture on it. So it says, um, what procedure is taking place on the concrete foot and pest pedestal? At this private construction site in the industrial section above, right? So there's a, you know, you have to know, you know, what it's a concrete footing, obviously, right? So A, rebar are being placed by hand, B, concrete is being placed by hand. We know that's not happening. Then that you, he's covering and he ended up putting concrete in there. Uh, concrete is being covered to retain heat and and C, concrete is being covered to prevent the reverse from rusting, right? So. Uh, uh, the A is not right, A or B are not correct because nothing's being placed by hand, right? He's not, he's not placing uh, rebar by hand. Nobody will be doing that. And inside the footing, the rebar will be there for the port, the the concrete is for. And then D, concrete is being carried to prevent the river from rusting. No. I mean, the re- so the most likely answer is C. And if you know anything about concrete, it's like concrete is always curing, right? So typically it takes twenty-eight days to to, you know, before it's acceptable for construction, but like concrete, you know. Kiss curing and curing and curing. And I, you know, I don't know how how many, how many years it takes to fully cure, but. You know, you know, when this is supposed to to water, yes, the matter still will cure. And then, you know, heat, you know, in this case, you know, heat definitely, and this this probably looks like it's our cold climate area. So they they do put in the the cover on it in order to help it cure, right? Cause you know, the 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 wet. I mean, the the cold weather, the the temperature, my effect, you know, is is still a cure, but it would take longer than usual. So you will put, you will cover it to retain heat and then heat will help those those molecules in the in the in the um. In the cement, right? You know, bomb more better with the with the water, with the water and cement bond with the aggregate and will help it cure. At that, at the level I suppose to, or the rate I suppose to. So that's why this is, that's what this gentleman here is covering that footing. It looks like he's wearing a coat too. So it must be a cold climate just to 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 make sure, ensure that the concrete cures at the at the correct rate. So uh, the answer is C on that one. Any questions on that one? I know questions. Alright, let's move forward to the next one. Alright, so. Number four, in the detail above from an air conditioning building located in a hot humid climate, right? Where should the vapor barrier be located? So very important, right? So you might be familiar with this kind of type of questions, kind of details, but the key, the key here is where is located, right? Where, you know, different areas of the country, in the United States, we have various zones, various various climates, you know, and this this test is always gonna be based in the U S. Uh, or North America or the northern hemisphere for the most part. So they're always gonna talk about the northern hemisphere when it comes to the world. You know, and typically North America, when it comes to continents and typically United States, when it comes to climates, right? So they're never gonna give you something from a Europe or Asia or some place you're not familiar or South America. They're always gonna keep it in this hemisphere, in this continent, in this country, where you most likely be familiar. And they're always gonna give you an extreme. So if they're gonna talk about, I'm just giving you a quick note, those, you know, they're always, if they're gonna give you a climate example, it's gonna be down in Florida, right? If they're gonna give you a cold example, it's gonna be in Alaska. That way you can see the comparison like, oh, Alaska is cold. So we're talking about cold. A is hot and hot and humid in Florida. Um, so it's gonna be hot and humid whenever they give you like a city. So they're gonna give you Miami or they're gonna give you like Fairbanks, Alaska or or Anchorage or something like that. They're never gonna give you something in between like, I don't know, like. Like where I am now, Richmond, Virginia, where we have temperate, where we had hot summers and cold winters. That might throw you off a little bit, right? Um, so they're always gonna give you the stream. And here they're telling you, hey, it's a hot human climate. So they're not giving you a city, but telling you what region of the country. Probably southeast, right? You know, south of us, you know, you know, cir- circa South Carolina, Georgia, Florida, Alabama, blah, blah, you know, those. So in those, in those areas where you typically, most of the years, hot and hot and humid, meaning that, you know, they get to, you know, January, February, sometime, you know, December. It's typically the cold months, but then you have another nine to ten months of humidity as opposed to, you know, Minnesota where you get is the opposite, right? So now let's get to the question. Sorry. So where should a vapor barrier relocated? So in in a wall. You know, you know, if you know anything from from wall systems, you always want to locate your vapor rate, vapor vapor barrier. On the warm side of the insulation, right? The warm side. So now, since this is a hot humid climate. The warm side for most of the year is gonna be on the outside, meaning if you look at this picture, the left side, the installations. So it will be leader D is pointing to the outside sheathing right there of the installation. Now, if we were, if we were in Minnesota in a cold climate, it will be the opposite because most of the year, the warm side is gonna be on the inside. Where I guess where A is, um, you know, where A is because that that warm is gonna be for most of the year, gonna be um, trying to keep heat, right? Because they're um, they don't want to lose heat because it's cold, you know, starting in right now, whether, you know, right, right now is super cold up there now. Even though right here in Virginia is kind of, you know, um, fall weather. So if, you know, so, but in Miami, in Florida, where I'm from. You know, I used to live, I grew up in Florida. Right now, it's like, you know, then you're ninety degrees down there, you know, so. So uh, you know, you always wanna go on the warm side of the insulation. So make sure you you pay attention to where they're telling you. You know, the climate is, you know, then they then they're gonna tell you, what should this this paper be put? And I not give you a location. They're not gonna throw you off like that because that that that's kind of like unfair. You not really know. Um, you know, you might just go by your own experience, but I also mean, it's the correct location, the correct place, but basically because it has to be based on the location. So. In this, in this case, hot humid climate, vapor barrier is to go on the outside in order to keep, you know, the heat from pat, you know, the the the. For for in order for um, the for for heat, you tend to prevent, prevent heat gain for most, the most part, right? Heat gain from outside. You got air conditioning inside. You don't want heat coming in. And the opposite in cold, in cold weather, you want. Cold weather outside, you don't want the heat to go away. So he always, he's oh, he's always traveling, right? So you never, he get, you you never, you never, you never gain coal, you lose heat, right? So heat loss means it's cold. He gains means he's hot. They never go like, oh, you're gonna get um. Uh, the the term of, you're never gonna hear the term uh, uh, coal game. You either be, because if you if it's cold, it's because he losing heat. If it's hot, because he gaining heat. So gee, he is the coefficient is the is the is the term that you're gonna see. Alright, so the answer on this one is D. Any questions on that one? Yeah, here in Virginia, I do a lot of residential homes, you know, for um, you know, we we typically put it on the on the warm side of the insulation. Um, which, you know, uh, we put the air barrier in the outside, but then, you know, vapor barrier will go on the inside. You know, but it's not air barrier, a vapor air, air barrier question. It's a vapor barrier question. Alright, so. Uh, number five, which jam anchor should be used for masonry wall? So you got different types of of uh, anchors here. You know, so the the right answer for this one is the one on the top left, uh, this guy right here. You know, those are the ones that go into the masonry, you know, in a masonry wall. Cause you see that the T anchor shape, you know, slides right there, either in between um. Uh, the grout, you know, the uh, the mortar or they can actually drill a hole to the concrete, I mean, to the concrete block. And anchor it that way. Those other ones are made for uh, stut walls. Uh, one is uh, I think that, yeah, the one next to it is is made, that was made for a stut wall, typical steel wall. Uh, the other one, it yeah, it can be used for both stud. They actually, all the ones can be used with the studs or or metal studs. Um, but the one is specific in the in the top uh, left corner is for with the Ts for A, is for uh, concrete, concrete blocks, masonry wall. So that's the one you wanna use for that. And that's the kind of question you might see where they give you these random details about hardware, which is, this is what this is. So you need to. You know, if you're never working on a masonry building, you'd be like, I don't know which one it is, but you know, you're probably gonna see it in your studies. You're gonna see the different types of it. I know that you're gonna see quite a bit is this question, um, question next, or something like similar to this. Uh, air fluorescence on masonry wall is caused by water soluble salts that are present in which of the following, right? So if you don't have weep holes in your wall, that's why fluorescence occurs. So let me tell you why. So let me give you the answer and I'll tell you what what why. Uh, why this happens. So the right answers here are uh, A, mortar and D, masonry units, right? So that's what this water was studied with salts are pressing in the mortar and the actual masonry that can break, you know, you see it in brick, which is an earth material. Uh, not concrete bricks, but like the the clay bricks. So if this is occurs when when you don't provide adequate, you know, uh, a adequate way for water to escape. Right? That's where you have the sweep holes and that's where you had the flashing because, you know, the water is gonna penetrate uh, to the brick. You know, and it has to drip to the underside of the brick and um. And it needs to come down. And then typically, if you uh, adequate adequately, you know, kind of like this uh. And it needs to come down, and then typically if you uh adequate, adequately, you know, kind of like this uh. Yeah, this right here. Um, where it's kind of hard to see, but you can see right here, it's perfect, it's perfect example. You, you have your brick right here, and you have. Uh, you had your weep hole be right here, you know, right here in, in this, in this section, and you got an angle there, you can see the flashing. So water is gonna drip down, either, you know, this wall here, and it hit this flash, and then it needs to come out somewhere. Cause you had this angle there, so if you don't have a way for the water to get out, water is gonna start compiling. And then that's going to, and that's gonna first, you know, then one, once you hit, gets moisture, that water will evaporate. And then, and then uh go back into the brick, and then the water is gonna actually spur out through the brick. And when it comes back out into the, either the brick or to the mortar, it's gonna have the effluorescence, that white stain that you're gonna see in the uh. On the walls, and doesn't look very pleasant, you know, it's not a big deal, it can be cleaned up, but it's something that, you know. With time, you know, people tend to get, don't clean their walls, you know, every, you know, every so often, you don't go outside, and you spray, you, you might spray. Uh, spray wash your house, uh, we had to pay somebody to do that. So, you know, for a while, you're gonna see that stuff in the brick or the masonry wall. Because the water is gonna basically sprouting back through the brick, that, you know, the way it came. And then, you know, that, the, the, it misses with the, you know, the chemicals or the brick and whatnot, it comes out looking, you know, white or whatever color it is. So, but if you provide adequate weep holes, what is gonna, gonna come out, is gonna come out as water. It's just gonna drip down your wall. Now, you, you might get a stain there too, but it's not gonna be as some slightly as that white stuff. That, you know, salt that you see with effluorescence, right? Uh, and that's very common, you know, if you don't provide the right amount of weep holes for water to come out, and the right detail on the walls, if you're not look correctly. Water has to come back out, and it also is gonna damage your wall, because you're gonna, you don't wanna have water piled up back there, right? Moisture is gonna, it's gonna, it's the whole. Effluorescence is the least of your worries, actually, if you, if you have that water piled up back there. Uh, that's actually a good thing, because water is at least coming back out. Alright, any questions on that, on that uh, on that one? Alright, you guys, God, there's no questions, okay, alright, so um. Let's see, uh, number seven, we almost done, so we got, making good time. Which of the following types of concrete construction is reinforced with tension high strength steel wire strength? So it's a different type of a wall, you know, different type of construction, you got, you know, you tilt up. Pre-stress, cast in place, and pre-cast, so tilted up, you know, has nothing to do with concrete construction, I mean, it is a kind of, I'm sorry, but it's not a type of wall. It's like, basically, it's a concrete wall with rebar or whatnot, and it's basically, you know, it's, it's basically tilted up, right? So they form it in the ground, you know, typically used for like large building, like warehouses, right? Um, and then they, you know, they, they form it in the floor, in the, in the ground. You know, pour the concrete, the rebar, pour the concrete, and then once it, once it's cured, it tilted up in place, and, and, and they use a crane to put it in place. So that's a type of, of wall construction, I mean, a wall of, of um. That's a type of um. Of, of, uh, delivery, not necessarily a type of wall. Uh, then you got, well, pre-stress, cast in place, so cast in place of, 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 and pre-cast are. Pre-cast is something that's made up site, you know, uh, like typically, like, pardon garage. Uh, well, you can do that on site too, but, you know, you got all the members that done offsite, and then they're, you know, in a truck and, and just basically assemble, right? Um, that's, it's that type of wall, again, just like tilt up, is done offsite. And then deliver, the, the, so the two that are in question are cast in place. Uh, where you, you basically, you know, you have a, you know, you build a form, and you put your, your rebars in there. And then you pour the concrete in there, and they cure it, till it forms out. But the right answer is pre-stress, so that's the one, instead of using your typical rebars, even though you can use rebars and pre-stress. You know, you use different uh reinforced tensions, high strength wire strands, it could be tendons. You know, um, in lieu of, uh, and that's how, as you know, concrete is not good in, in tension. It's great in compression, but not good in tensions, right? In order to provide, um, you know, um. Tensile forces, you have to apply reinforcement, which is rebars. You know, re- because steel is great on both uh tension and compression. Now, the problem is, is in order for that, for that um. For that steel to fully, uh, to fully uh, uh, provide the tensile strength that it needs to. It needs to uh, it needs to stress, it needs to stretch, e- essentially, right? And then when it's still stressed, it stretches, sometimes you have cracks. Right? That's what, that's why, that's what steel cracks, that's typically where you see a sidewalk, you have this control joint, because essentially. Once, you know, the, the rebar, because say, you, you, different, uh, the rebar inside. You know, being exposed to different temperatures, it's going to stretch, it's going to stress, and then that's gonna move the concrete, and that forces it to crack. Now, if you want to prevent cracking, you use pre-stress uh tendons, right? Meaning that before the poured concrete is, the tendons are already stressed to the capacity. So they don't have to stress, rebar, when you put a rebar, you can't, you know, you hold a rebar, you're like, okay, this stuff is not stressed, you put it in place. When it gets pushed, it gets exposed to um temperatures. It will, it will stress, you know, naturally, because it's steel, it will move, and that move is what causes the concrete to crack. Now, we, and, and, and architects and engineers, we kind of expect that to happen. We know it's gonna be cracks. Eventually, you will have what's called spalling, where a whole section of the concrete will move, and you will see. You will see the um, the rebar is exposed, are we all seeing like, what by a concrete structure, looked up and seen. The rebar all rusted, right? That's because water is getting in there. Now, when water gets through the concrete to ca- ca- uh, capillary action, right? Or whatever other methods, it gets in there, and it gets to the steel, it's gonna even make it worse. So that steel is going to expand even more, and then fall, and then. Uh, force that concrete to um, to break, and then you will see that, that rebar exposed. And then that's what's called spalling, and eventually, if you don't get that repair, then the, the, the rebar will eventually break, because it will deteriorate, you know? And that's why you, you had a several, you know, throughout history, you had uh, structure collapses because of, you know, because of that. But we can solve all this, all that issue we have in, the tendons already pre-stressed. So typically, if you're building in an area, for example, like. In Florida, where I used to live, if you live in, if you're building a condo or any, any structure that's close to the ocean, the ocean is horrible for steel. Completely horrible, like, you know, multiply that times ten, you know, if you're gonna build next to the body of water, the ocean. You know, it's, that's constantly gonna be hit with water, that water will eventually find its way to the concrete, and it will get, and it will get to that. Um, that pre-stress uh, that, that, that rebar, and force even more cracks. And then spalling, and then, you know, we know what happened with that condo that collapsed in, in, in Florida a few years ago, a couple of years ago. Same situation, close to the ocean, and eventually. That deteriorated structure, basically, that's basically what happened. So we've had pre-stress, pre-stress uh, concrete, you don't, you don't have that issue, because. In, in, um, it's the concrete is already stressed, and you, the possibility of cracks reduces quite, quite a bit. Uh, and then you wouldn't, you're not gonna have, you know, that concrete spanning, and causing cracks, and causing water to get in there. To further, even for uh cost more spalling, the concrete, big chunk of concrete fall off. So that's what we do, pre-stress, more expensive, that's why it's not as, it's not, it's not as common as just using a straight rebar. But depending on the situation is probably sometimes the best choice, so. I know I said a lot there, everybody understand what I was saying? Or why you wanna use pre-stress, or either post, post-tension concrete, or, or, or pre, pre-tension, so. The, the, those are both pre-stress concrete, so pose is done. Um, you know, uh, pre-tension concrete is done, you know, on, off-site, kind of like pre-cast. And post-tension is done on-site, you know, they do everything, they, they stretch the tendons and pour the concrete and do it all in there. And then the other one is done, pre-stress is done off-site. Uh, uh, pre-tension, I mean, pre-tension is done off-site, uh, and then brought to the side already assembled. Um, and that's our both pre-stress concrete, because the concrete is already stressed. Okay, so, any questions on that one? No questions, I, I, so let's go to the number eight. Uh, we're almost done here, so number eight, uh, again, you must see several questions on test, on the exam, like asking you for random hardware questions. Um, what type of lock, lock set is pictured below? Right? And the, the right, the right question for that one is, uh, the, I mean, the right type right there is a mortise. Some mortise uh, uh, lock set, and it goes inside, you know, so, you know, you don't see them as, as, you know, cylinder and lever are more, are more common. That's probably what you have in your office right now, you know, the mortise ones, the kind of that goes into the um. Into the, to the inside of the door, it's typically a more secure type of lock, you know, use it for heavier doors. Uh, so it's mortise inside the, inside the, 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 inside the actual doors, it's like one big box like that, so it's, it's. Typically a more secure lock than your typical cylinder and level, and lever. So one unit typically have a, a dip ball, and then you have the, the, have a thumb turn or a key, all together, together, and. Compiles out of the door, so that, that's that one right there. Um, number nine. Um. So we're gonna do two more questions, and then I'll do number them, because I, 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 I know we're running out of time, but. Number nine is, a waterproofing treatment should be specified in a little bit damp proofing treatment because of subsurface masonry. When which of the following conditions is pressing, right? So we talk about waterproofing here, against details, right? Detail, 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 like, you know, that you have to make these decisions in this, in this exam, on the construction document face. Okay, you know, how am I going to protect, you know, my subsurface, subsurface condition on the, on the substructure, right? So um, waterproofing treatment should, should be specified instead of damp proofing. You know, when the following conditions pressing, and the other one that, that thought, that has to do anything with water there is A hydrostatic pressure, right? So typically, every time you do a foundation, you know, you had to, you had to provide damp proofing, right? If you do a foundation wall, and you're gonna have earth, you know, butt against that wall, against that, that stem wall, whatever type of wall it is. You know, um, you know, you're gonna have, uh, you're gonna have moisture in that soil. You know, and that moisture would transfer into, into your foundation, and it could cause damage later, so. You definitely, you definitely wanna have um damp proofing, you know, which is several different types. Um, you know, in that wall, but sometimes you have to. You, you know, increase that to actual, to actual, actually waterproofing, which is more, more, and more, and more detailed. Um, method of, of waterproofing your, your foundation. When you know, like, you, you show report comes back saying that, you know, it's a significant amount of hydrostatic pressure. Down there in the water, meaning there's more water movement, this subsurface water movement. For example, I'm from Florida, right, when I'm Florida, um. We don't build basins down there, right? Um, because the water table is so high, like, you start digging, you know, two, three feet, and you're, and you're gonna see, you know, water in the soil. That, that's how, that's how high the wat- you know, you, you know, you, you, that's how high, that, that high the water table is. So you don't wanna be building basement, you don't wanna, I mean, you could, but why would you do that? That, you're gonna, it's gonna be a nightmare. You're gonna have to deal with, with, with all that, you know, it's gonna be quite expensive, and then you're gonna have to dig, and you're gonna hit water, it's gonna be a mess. Up here, uh, you know, as you get in higher elevations, you know, then, you know, you can build bases no issues, because the water table is so low. And you can dig and dig and dig and not find water. Um, so that's what hydro, hydrostatic pressure is, so when, in the presence of, the presence of water in the soil, so if you have that. You know, like I say, every time you do any type of foundation, you gotta do damp proofing, because the soil, the soil is just gonna be. It's gonna have water in it no matter what, but if you find actual water in the soil, uh, on a high water table. Um, then you definitely have to do waterproofing, which is a more expensive method to protect your walls. Uh, and sometimes people don't, you know. A lot, that, that, most of the houses that are in Florida are, you know, um, a slab on grade. Very, you know, much of the south, you know, very shallow foundations, you know, because you don't wanna deal. You know, that, that, the, the, uh, the colder the climate, uh, you had, you had to, you know, dig further, right? You have a frost line. Uh, which here in Virginia is typically two feet, you know, uh, so you get up in colder climates, it's more because the, the freeze thaw cycle in the soil. It's, you know, the colder it is, it's the deeper it is. Um, so down there is not as deep, you can, you can build as low as eighteen inches, twelve inches sometimes. But you had to, but you had to deal with the water, because if you build deeper, you're gonna have to deal with that water, so that's why. Uh, you don't have to worry about frost and thaw cycle, but you have to worry about the water, so you don't wanna build as deep, uh, but. Hydrostatic pressure is, is the, is the answer there. And then we, we're gonna skip number eleven, because uh, we're not gonna get finished if we, we done, but we're gonna do our last one here. Um, number ten, which of the brick with near patterns is the most expensive per square foot? This again, a ca- a cost estimate question, so. Uh, if you, if you're trying to make that fancy wall, you know, so you got your typical, um, your typical running bond at the top. And then I think you have your uh Flemish bond, I believe that's what they, Flemish bond. And then you have your stack bond, right, within stack, and then you have your English bond at the bottom, right? So which one of these will be more expensive, right? So I think the, the cheap, the, technically, the cheapest. One is will be your running bond on top, because, uh, well, not even that, because you still have to cut the brick at the end. So technically, technically, even though it's not the most structurally sound one. It's the, the stack bond, right? Because you, basically, you're stacking brick on top of each other. You're not cutting brick, you're not doing nothing, you know, every time you have to cut a brick, you can use it on the other side. You still have potential for you to lose a brick here, you know, here and there. You know, but, you know, technically, if, if, if done, if done right, you can do a very nice uh stack. Uh, bond, either wall, or, you know, brick wall, masonry wall, no matter, you know. If, in a lot of mid-century homes, used to use that nice tag bond, you know, for just, you know, for a level. Um, very nice, so it could be aesthetic, not if you're gonna have the block exposed, uh. But the, the most expensive one is the last one, which is the English bond. The reason is because you have a, a stretcher. You know, at the top, and then after that, you, you're basically doing a roll-up. Uh, 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 um, um. Uh, you have, what is it, I'm losing the word, um. You have the width, and you have course, there you go, courses, each one, each of the horizontal ones are course, right? We know that course, 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 so you have the top row is, you know, your typical stretcher. Course, and after that, you have a roll-up course where you turn the brick around, so you're losing, uh, you know, three, uh, you know. Uh, uh, three quarters of a brick, right? Cause you basically turn it, turn it in one way. And know, and then, and then potentially you could, and then you, again, you have another course, and then you had that again, another course, another course, so it's like. That repetition adds to the cost, right? Cause you know, you know, where, you could say right here, the, the Flemish one, but. The Flemish one does, you know, cores, and you're rolling, and you got one, two, three, four. Stretchers, you know, so you got, that's repetition, that means you, you're saving money. And then before you go to the, to the, to the, to the, uh, to the roll-up one, and then you go another header. Right? At this point, you're doing it, you're doing every other one. So because you're doing every other one, you're using more brick, more cutting, more resources, that's gonna add to the cost. Now, the materials bring labor, right? Because you have. You know, repetition, when you're doing repetition, you're doing something, it's easy, you know, stretcher, you laying brick, and you like to break, and you let it break. So it's faster for Mason to do that than having to, okay, I'm gonna do a lay of course, and I have to switch everything I'm doing. To this other, you know, uh, roll-out cord, and then again, do this over, so it's kind of like. It's repetition into, in two ways as opposed to one way, you know? This right here is straight repetition, right? The same thing over and over again. This one is one, then another one, and you do the same. For four courses, and then you go back. This one is, you know, just stacking brick, stacking masonry. You know, and then this other one is, is more, yes, yes, in terms of material, and that, and, and also in terms of labor. So that's the overall, so that's gonna, that's adding to the, the cost per square foot. Any questions on that one? And like I say, you don't see these as often anymore, I mean, the, the, the. The running bond is the most common one, you see everywhere with brick, and then stacked, you know, certain situations where it's not structural. You know, can look beautiful, these two right here, very specialized, you know, because they're more expensive and they take more time and. Um, but the English one is the one that's uh, take the more resources. Any questions on that one? Alright, so we got five minutes, I'm gonna go ahead and skip this question and get to the resources, and, and then, then we can wrap up. So, okay, so what this study for the exam, so this, you know, according to Ann Carbon, according to my own experience, when I, when taking this exam. These four books that you see here are the best ones. Um, and these are what we call primary sources, meaning that, you know, that the, the questions from the exam. Are kind of from, you know, are, these are the, what they're, they're using for, to write the questions on the exam. Right? As opposed to like secondary sources, which is like myself, or all these other providers that provide books and, and stuff. Um, that Ann Carbon's not using to write the questions, right? So, physical structure is straighted, architecture to the companion. The meat book, I never read, I have never, I've never opened a meat book, because that, is that, I don't know if you, if you have, it's like, this, this thick. Right? One of my professors, Walter Gronzick, he was my professor at FAMU, uh, fifteen years ago, he was teaching then. We use that, we use that book in his class, because he thought um environmental systems for buildings, right? So obviously, he's gonna use his own book for that class. But uh, we use the book then in his class, I bought it and I sold it, you know, which I, I, I had kept it. Um, way back, I think it was that second year of architecture school, and then he got another job somewhere else. But this book is like, as far as mechanical and ethical stuff for architects, we can understand. That's that kind of the Bible, however, just like the Bible, it's a, it's a very long read, right? Um, I mean, there's plenty of other places where you can find um reference notes and stuff to it. But I never, I never bought or opened it, but people say that it's great. But I never, I never bought or opened it, but people say that is great and you should, you should use it. And then obviously, the graphic, Architectic Graphic Standard, a lot of details in there. You know, this this exam is gonna have a ton of details, so go in there and get familiar with, you know, roofing details, wall details, foundation details. And I said, the Architectic Graphic Standard has been around since the nineteen thirties. So I think it's like the under eleven, or the twelfth edition right now. So it's been around forever, and people, you know, it's the the most widely known book as far for details in architecture. I mean, the chin book is pretty good. But the Architectic Graphic Standard is kind of like the the standard, you know, that generations of architects have used. You know, since the nineteen thirties or whatever, so. You know it's gonna be on the exam, everything they take on exams, some stuff comes directly from that, that book. So, you know, you, your office might have a copy, if you don't have a copy, you can get one. And it's a great reference to have, so if you buy it, I mean, you're not just buying it for, to serve for the exam, you can use it for your own practice, I mean, because. Since it's been around forever. The office I had, they had like the eighth edition, which was like forty years old when I was reading it. And it was still kind of relevant, you know, uh but I know with with new technology, new methods of material. New methods of construction, they've been upgrading it. But Graphic Standards, Building Chin, Building, uh Construction Illustrated is great, you know, a great book. And then, so those two are the number one, you know, one, two, and then. And then me, and uh companions, three and four, if I had a rate them, if that was important. Obviously, when I get familiar with the IBC, you know, twenty eighteen, that's what this code is using. You know, chapters three, four, ten, uh five. I know those, 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 those are the ones that are typically referenced, especially when you're doing the um. Uh what do I call it? The uh the case study questions, you know, um so. You don't have to memorize it, just know what stuff is, because when you get the this case, this case study questions, they're gonna give you a copy of it, PDF of it. You can go reference it, if you know where to look, you can get more faster, you can type in and search and get and get and get um. And 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 find that stuff a lot faster. Alright, so that's that. Uh this is, then these are secondary sources that I, myself, I use personally. You know, Amber Book, Pluricide, some of these are subscription based, as you know, some of these are one-time payment. Um so they'll have practice exam, let's say, get as many practice tests as you can. Um some of these use kind of a similar interface that the NCAR uses, so you feel like you're taking the test when you're taking their stuff, like. I know blast spectacles or stuff looks just like the, like the NCAR, you know, so, uh the interface of the test. So it's a good thing for you to have that, that way you can um, you you know, you feel like you're taking the test and. Uh Amber Book is great, because it's all visual videos, nothing to read. You know, um then you also have your typical uh practice uh exam books and stuff. Um you can buy, and you saw some good ones here, and of course, you can always use um. NCAR uh resources, right? You can always use um. You can always use uh stuff that comes, is coming directly from NCAR. You know, the other stuff is typically free, so that's a good thing about it. You know, you can, you can use that for free, you don't have to um, and you don't have to worry about subscribing or buying them, and stuff comes directly from them. So it's also just available, especially the practice test, make sure you take advantage of that. Uh and then, of course, a handbook and stuff like that, right? So, uh any questions? I know we went through a lot here. Any questions on the, on the exam or the questions that I had?
Could you just super quickly tell us the answer to number eleven? Just so I confirm I did the math right?
Uh okay, so let me see, I mean, I haven't even looked at it, so let me see. Uh so the way I would do this, so based on the table above, the minimum number of water clauses required for. Is uh four thousand, so they got, think of passing four thousand, so the way you look at, you look at the the water clauses here. Uh so this, you know, giving you, you know, over four hundred, obviously, we're over four hundred, like it's four thousand. You know, for man is uh seven, for eight, for each additional two hundred, and for woman is is uh one. For every additional one hundred. So basically, what you'll do is you'll divide four thousand into two, right? So you wanna, you wanna um. You wanna, uh let me do the math here. Let's do it, see, we got this right answer, let's do it together, because I don't have the right answer for this one, but let's see, if not, then we'll. So four thousand divided by two is, uh so the one, oh again, the one of the women, only the women, so one of the the classes require for women, not for both. So we're only looking at the, at the right side of the table here, so. So the uh the most, they go to four hundred is twelve, right? So after that is uh uh one for each additional, additional increments of one hundred. In excess of four hundred, alright, so. You divide it in half, so let's say, divide equally, so that's two thousand, right, two thousand uh people, people. And then uh you divide, so you want, you got one excess of four hundred, you, I mean, one hundred, so you divide it by one hundred. Right? Because uh you you going over two thousand, I mean, four hundred. So that's twenty, oh wait a minute, let me see, uh.
Twenty-nine?
Yeah, so it'd be twenty-nine, yeah, so, yeah, so you divide by a hundred, you add that, and you you get twenty-nine, that's what I got, so.
Yeah, that's what I got. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, there you go, so, uh any other questions on that? On the, on the, any other questions on the exams or anything that we went over?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, great. Uh actually, we'll be having another one of these every month, the next one will be uh CA. Uh that's construction about uh 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 CE, I'm sorry, construction evaluation, that's CA. CE, construction evaluation, which is uh, we'll be having that in November. So hopefully, um you can join us again in November, and we can do that one, uh for that one, that'll be the last one for the year. Uh and then we'll resume again next year, but please tell your colleagues, tell your friends, anybody that's studying for the exam, that this is happening. Uh yes, you have a question?
Uh yes, I missed the portion of this because I was having technical difficulties. Will you have a recording of this that I can watch?
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is, this is being recorded right now, and we're going to post it on our, uh Vietnama YouTube um. Uh YouTube page, YouTube page, uh. Let's see, do I have a link to that directly? I'm trying to see, I'm not, it's gonna be posted, um, did you sign up for, um, did you sign up um for the, for this? Or you just? You signed up? Okay, so once we post it, I can send you a link to it. You know, so.
Thank you, that would be great.
Yeah, it was posted on our YouTube page. Um yeah, so um other than that, um. Thank you all for coming, I said, next, hopefully you can join us next month, and make sure that you um. That you bring uh, that you tell others about this, and you can uh, that way you can um. Uh others can take advantage of 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 this session, hopefully it helps, and good luck with your exams, you know, if you're taking them, you know, uh in next month. Or in in the coming future, good luck, and you know, let us know how you did, please let us know, just send us an email that we. We we know that, you know, that you, that you passed, and you know, and we're fulfilling our mission of helping you all become licensed. Alright, so thank you very much, and enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you.
Alright, bye-bye.